Okay, the first item on our agenda is a consent agenda. And this is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Okay, Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the consent agenda, which is item I, approval of the audit claims for payment from July 8th, 2015 through August 4th, 2014. Item B, approval of regular commissioner meetings minutes from June 2nd, June 16th, and July 17th, 2015, and a special commission meeting minutes of July 14th, 2015. Item C, approval of administrative adjustments for real property. Item D, approval of administrative adjustment for personal property. Item E, approval of applications for property tax payments. Item F, approval of memorandum of understanding between Utah Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force and the Washington County Sheriff's Office for 2015 through 2016 reimbursement grant. Item G, approval of ratification of the inter-local agreement between the City of St. George and Washington County for the 2015 Bryant-Justson Assistant Grant Program Award. Item H, approval of predator control for year 2015 through 2016 between the State of Utah, the Department of Agriculture, and Washington County. Item E, approval of amendment number one to the White Dome Nature Preserve Grant Agreement between Washington County and the Nature Conservancy. Item J, approval of FY 2015 Five Counties Association of Governments Contract Amendment Number Two with Washington Council, County Council on Aging for Aging and Nutrition Services. And item K, approval of FY 2015 Utah Department of Public Safety Division of Emergency Management Preferment Grant.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, our first item is emergency services report.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Apologize to sheriff and under sheriff are both out of town, so apparently I got chose to come here today.
You got to be the lucky one.
I'm the lucky one.
You're the one out there doing all the rescuing anyway, so.
You can be thankful, this report's not near as long as the last one. We only had four call-outs in the last six weeks. There were a total of ninety man-hours involved. On 6:25 in the evening, we had an injured hiker up on North Main in Washington. Gentleman fell approximately twenty to thirty feet, fractured a few bones in his body. Washington Fire Department responded, realized that they needed assistance getting him out, so we were called out. Our High Angle and our EMS responded, and we ended up extracting him down to the bottom and hauling him back around and put him on Mercy Air, which flew into DRMC. Apparently, one arm was broken and then his leg was severely fractured. On 7:28, so you know it's a little over a month there, so I could get all my reports done for a reimbursement. We had an injured hiker up in Water Canyon in Hilldale. They actually called for our assistance, the Hilldale EMS. And we had a fifty-year-old female that was hiking with a group, hiking in the canyon. She fell about thirty feet, fractured her elbow. She was in a very tight spot in that canyon, and it would've taken a hundred-foot lift to get her out, raise her up a hundred feet to get her out. So, classic lifeguard was called out of Kanab. They flew in, dropped off one of their people, went up there, landed on a four-foot rock, put her in, and then brought her back down to us, and then we stabilized her, and she was taken down to DRMC. The only injury, like I said, was to her elbow. Then we had on this last Sunday, had a lost hiker in Snow Canyon. That was on the second, eighteen-year-old female with a group on Three Ponds Trail. She got separated, got down in a wash and couldn't find her way out. She sat down, called 911, and waited for help. She did run out of water in the meantime. And a deputy and myself and a couple of SAR guys went up the West Canyon Road. She noticed the deputy's back of his truck and called in, and so we stopped, went down the wash, picked her up and brought her back, and she was fine. And then that same evening, we had another one out in Hurricane, a seventeen-year-old male, eight-year-old female on a Ryan UTV. Took off about six o'clock, went south toward Warner Valley, hadn't been seen. This was about nine o'clock, we got the call. I dispatched search and rescue, headed out toward Warner Valley, and was notified that some family and friends had found them down by the dinosaur tracks. Apparently, he had, the seventeen-year-old had wrecked the UTV, laid it over on its side. So they were taken by private ambulance, by private car to the hospital to be checked out, and I canceled that SAR because they were located. And that's all we've had as far as searches go. Just as a note, on the ninth of July, we, Search and Rescue received a donation from the Findley Group and several other sponsors for a total of $11,374, which got put into the Search and Rescue Donation Fund account. And also the Dixie Rotary, or the Rotary Club of Dixie Sunrise has committed to, through fundraising, to purchase ten Garmin 650 GPS Rhinos and ten radio harnesses, one rescue Randy for training, which both the dive team and the High Angle will utilize, and a forty-horsepower jet outdrive motor for the fifteen-foot inflatable rescue boat that we have. So.
That's tremendous help.
What's that?
That's just tremendous help with all of that.
Yes. The community's really stepped out this year and come forward with a lot of help for search and rescue, so we really do appreciate it. One other thing, the Search and Rescue does have their annual steak fry-up at CoLab on the nineteenth at 6:30 at the Girl Scout Camp, and Commissioners and Mr. Cox and are all invited with your spouses to come up and participate with us.
Thank you. Nineteenth of August?
Nineteenth of August. It was actually set for the night the fair opens, but the commander was informed that that was the night the fair opened, so.
We appreciate you doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Convey our thanks to all of those on search and rescue. Okay, our next item of agenda is purchases. Mark?
We have two purchases today, request. The first one is for a total station package for accident and crime scene reconstruction hardware and the software for that. This is not a budgeted item, but it is from the revenue from the beer tax. We'll take care of purchasing this hardware and software, and the total there is $13,791. The next one we have is for St. George Convention and Tourism Office, and they are redoing this. It's doing some street lighting for Springdale Town, and this is a budgeted item for them, and it's updating streetlights, and this is coming out of the special products, special projects for the tourism office, and the total there is $50,000. That's all we have today.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve these two purchases requests. The first one to the sheriff's office and the second to the convention and tourism office.
Go ahead and second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item three, consideration of resolution R-2015-1925, a resolution approving the extension of an agreement between Five Counties Association of Governments in Washington County to provide services to senior citizens in Washington County.
I can speak to this one, Commissioners. This is a funding agreement where grant money comes into the county every year to fund most of the activities of our Council on Aging, and that involves providing meal services, both at-home meals and homes at our senior citizen centers. It provides counseling services that are offered to aging individuals and their families. It provides some outreach, some telephone calls, and just some different things that happen. And I believe on the consent agenda, you had an amendment to this contract that you're approving now, so I think the numbers have already changed and the numbers have gone up from what we originally received. But this is just federal funding that comes in to help cover those, well, that covers that program and those costs.
Thank you for that explanation. Thanks.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I've been involved with the Council of Aging, and they do a lot of good services for the seniors of our county and helping them keep their independence, so I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve resolution number R-2015-1925, a resolution approving the executive execution of an agreement between Five Counties Association of Governments and Washington County to provide services to senior citizens in Washington County.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item number four, consideration of resolution R-2015-1926, a resolution appointing Dean Cox to the Community Education Channel Board.
I'll just speak briefly to this. Of course, the CEC is covering us today, and they have a great board meeting, and unfortunately, from time to time, I haven't been able to attend, and so Dean is...
He's the lucky one?
He's the lucky one, and so I talked to him, he's really excited about taking my place on that board, and so I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution R-2015-1926.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Dean, that's, you got outvoted there.
Yeah, it was three to nothing because you don't let me vote.
Okay, item five, resolution number R-2015-1927, a resolution approving the bylaws and guidelines of the Washington County RAP Advisory Board.
Commissioners, I believe that you have some members of your RAP Advisory Board that are here that could speak to this.
Chair is here as well.
Yeah, Gary, do you want to come and talk to us? While he's coming up, I've said this before, this advisory board, and of course, we have several advisory boards in the county, but I've been extremely impressed with our members and just their hard work. They started from nothing, and they put together this, they put together the applications online and some other things.
Yeah, well, I think, first, I'd like to recognize the members of the board that are here. We have Summer Robertson, Vice Chair, as well as Clyde Johnston that's here, and then Doug Caputo, I think, stepped down for a second. So we almost have a voting majority here, I guess.
Not out of the violation of open meetings act at all.
No.
You're here on TV, so whatever you want to conduct, I guess, we've got plenty of audience.
But first, I would like to thank Eric Clark for his assistance in helping us draft the bylaws. It's been a good procedure helping us get to that point, and then as the board has met over the past, what, few months, couple of months, to refine guidelines and looked at various options of how to proceed with the RAP funds as an advisory committee recommending board to the county commission, we've had a lot of good input. Clyde Johnston's really kind of taken the lead in helping come up with a draft policy and procedures, applications to move forward, and so we're ready to go with that, a couple of little minor tweaks, and then we'll be able to launch that and get some applications in and help move things forward here in the county with the county's part of the share of the RAP tax, so.
And I guess, we've said this over, but just so the public would know, the RAP Board is tasked with fifteen percent of the total RAP that is dedicated towards cultural and arts, I guess would be the best way to describe it. So not the entire portion of RAP, of the RAP tax, but that fifteen percent portion, so.
Yeah, for those of you that may not be familiar with RAP is, it's recreation, arts, and parks, and that is the tax that was passed on last November during the election to go on our sales tax, so.
Right, a tenth of a percent.
Yeah.
And again, I'd also like to mention, thanks to Gavin over in your IT department. He's done a tremendous job helping get an application up online and allowing us to kind of get into the next century as far as with some of that.
Fifteen percent of this, as Victor mentioned, does go to the RAP Board, which is organized by the county, to go to artistic, I guess you'd say, within the county.
Cultural and artistic.
Cultural arts, and the other is divided up among the various communities and to the unincorporated areas of the county for recreation things or whatever. They can use it for arts too, whatever, but a lot of that will go for recreation. But this fifteen percent will be dedicated specifically for the arts. Okay, I'm ready for motion.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. With a hearty thanks to the committee, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number 2015-1927, a resolution approving the bylaws and guidelines of the Washington County RAP Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, item number six, resolution dash 2015-1928, a resolution stating Washington County's intention to bond a portion of the cost of a new building for the Dixie Applied Technology Center.
Can we have some members here from the board?
Yes. Would you, Kelly, if you want to speak, and Steve, you're in charge of a major part of that fundraiser, if you want to give us some comments as well?
Give us an update where we're at on the building to the public.
Okay, I'm Kelly Stevens, President at the Dixie Applied Technology College. With me is Mr. Stephen Wade, UCAT trustee, and also board member of the Dixie Applied Technology College. Appreciate very much the consideration of the commission in looking at this bond. We are, as you know, thirty-one point nine million from the legislature, which left us thirteen million dollars short. We are looking now at asking the county to bond, most likely in the range of eight million. And that would happen through an agreement where the county would own a portion of the facility, and the Dixie ATC would enter into a lease agreement, and we would lease pay that until the bond is paid back. So it would not include any county tax revenues to get that paid back. The additional funds is coming in through efforts by Mr. Wade and Stephen. Would you like to talk to that for a moment?
Sure. I think I have to tell you gentlemen how important this is for the, what I call the bedrock of our community, for us to continue to build the community the way it should be. There's such a need out there for young men and women that really want to improve themselves, and our infrastructure needs it. And we've, successful, we have about five hundred, six hundred thousand, I think, raised already. I believe that we can raise five million, have a good team of people that are helping with this, that are knowledgeable, and we've met a number of times, we've met again just, what was it, yesterday? And we are trying to establish some groundwork with large donors, and this bonding will give it the credibility to add to that, that it's a reality, because they're holding us at bay, as you know, on the state level. But this allows us to get started immediately, move this thing, get right after it, and then I'm confident, very confident, that we'll raise the other five million. So with your help, a little statement, it was said to me when you were helping some ladies in Africa, she said to me, and it took me for a loss, she looked me right in the eyes and said to Swahili, "With your help, as little children, we learn to crawl before we learn to walk. With your help, we'll now learn to crawl and then to walk. And this is with your help, you're going to take us where we can really move this thing forward in an expedite in a way that'll benefit everything we're trying to accomplish, and what you want to."
Well, we really appreciate your efforts there in the fundraising position you're in, because, you know, it is something that is very important to the community and to the whole county and to this end of the state, really, so we appreciate your efforts.
No, thank you so much.
Yeah, this is going to be a great asset to our community when we talk about workforce development, and more importantly, the building, just where it's going to be, and it's just going to anchor that entire park up there as far as developing a wonderful park. But anyway, we did talk to, we had our bond person, and he...
Yeah, we had a...
Had a good visit with him yesterday, and he was positive about going forward. Zach, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll be happy to make this motion. So I make the motion that we approve resolution number R-2015-1928, a resolution stating Washington County's intention to bond a portion of the cost of a new building for the Dixie Applied Technical Center.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, item number seven, consideration of resolution 2015-1929, a resolution approving amendment one to an agreement between the US Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources Conservation Service in Washington County regarding the provision of funds for planning and design for rehabilitation of the Frog Hollow Debris Basin and for design of the Ivans Dam.
Commissioners, I can speak to this one also. Normally, our contracts for our emergency service, well, our NRCS, or our federal money comes in to help us repair damage due to flooding, and we've done a ton of those over the last two years. Normally, we put those on your consent agenda. With this one, the amount's big enough, we put this on the regular agenda. This is for work on the Frog Hollow and some Ivans Dambs, and it includes funds for environmental assessments, which are a federal process that are quite costly. And so the federal funds come in, we're, the county receives those, and it kind of receives the management of those, and then we'll be, we're contracting back with the NRCS entity to actually do the environmental assessments, as to the tune of half a million dollars. So that's what this contract is for, is just having that money flow in that direction.
So they give us the money and then they take the money back for the work?
Yeah, they've asked for us to do this because they need to show that it's being contracted with.
Right. No, it'd be good to get these, I mean, every time it rains, I stay awake at night thinking of certain places, and these Ivans Dambs are essential for the community.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution R-2015-1929, a resolution approving amendment one to an agreement between the US Department of Agriculture, Natural Resource Conservation Service, and Washington County regarding the provision of funds for planning and design for rehabilitation of the Frog Hollow Debris Basin and for design of the Ivans Dam 1-6.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, number eight, consideration of updates to Washington County's Employment Policies and Procedures Manual. Dean, are you going to?
You bet, Commissioners. We've got three of them that we're asking for your approval on. On personal time off, we're trying to bring our policy in line with our current practices and procedures. Basically, what we're defining there is that on vacation days and for part-time people, there will be no PTO accrual for that time if someone is out on workers' compensation. There will be no PTO off for that time either. But this clears that up and clarifies those areas of ambiguity that we've had in our policy. The second section that we're looking at is section five on hiring and for new and vacant positions, and this also continues to streamline and consolidate how we go about that process. In our prior policy, we had an internal option for the department, internal to the county and external advertising, and we stopped and thought about it, and in the past five or six years, I can't think of a single time that we have chosen to just advertise within the county, and so we're recommending the elimination of that. So if a department head feels that they have qualified people working within the department, we can attempt to fill that internally, and our other option would be to go out and do that externally. It also talks about and defines a little bit of the process and procedure on the interview and things like that, to make sure that we're doing it systematically in a consistent way. The final piece is on our workers' compensation. Our old policy, we provided up to sixty days of coverage where people would be paid by the county, and then if they were covered by workers' compensation, we would try to get that money back, but it's just unnecessary, and so we are recommending tightening that from sixty days down to three. And the reasons that we would like to keep it at three days, for example, we have a lot of incidents that I wouldn't call accidents, I'd call them intentionals. For example, in purgatory, prisoner may assault a guard, and it could actually impose hardship on the employee through no fault of their own if they weren't paid for the initial two days that they would be out on workers' comp unless they were hospitalized. And so our policy will allow us to pay for the first three days, and then if workers' comp comes back and covers that, then we are requesting in our policy that they reimburse the county for those three days. But we want to hold the employees harmless, and this revision accomplishes that without unduly burdening the county for a longer period of time. And those are the changes and the recommendations that we'd like to make.
Commissioners, you may see several items from the Employee Policy Manual coming to over the next few months, just because as Sherry gears up to move into literally greener pastures, she's working on getting, just going through and making sure everything's updated and current, so.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, unless there's questions?
No.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we update the Washington County Employee Policies and Procedure Manus as outlined.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I will say that Washington County has what I think a great HR department, no doubt.
Yeah, they do, we do. Okay, thank you, that, that motion passes. Okay, number nine, Commissioners' Report.
Well, I just want to invite everybody out to the county fair. It's coming up next week, and we're going to have a great county fair, and there's always the, I should have brought a bunch of that stuff to demonstrate, I didn't think about it, but anyway, at your local grocery store, you ought to be able to find an outline. There's always a lot of free stuff to take your family to. I think we have elephants this year. We have had bears, rattlesnakes, and so elephants, everybody's got to like an elephant, so there's a lot of fun things to do.
Come out and watch Victor ride, that's going to be interesting.
Of course, we have demolition derbies and a lot of other things. I think when we compare Washington County fairs to other fairs around the state and the nation, I think we're still at the top. And so anyway, I'd like to invite everybody out, even though it is the week that school starts. People ask why we chose this week. It's because when the carnival could come is when we plan our fair. So our fair's planned around the carnival. So anyway, it's great. The second thing I'd like to say is, had a chance to meet in Tropic, Utah, a great place, Eric Clark, you're from there, right? Okay, so anyway, we met with a regional forester, and it was part of the Five County. It was a great meeting. We discussed a lot of our concerns with Forest Service and access, and fortunately for us, is Washington County has a really good relationship with our local foresters, so we don't have as many points of conflict that other counties that neighbor us do, but it was a good meeting.
All right, thank you. Okay, Public Works, we're going to...
Run it, Saul Ray.
Yeah, run it, send somebody or not. Okay, County Development and Planning, Scott's not here either, okay. HCP.
Cameron's here.
You drew the short straw today, huh?
I did, yes. My name's Cameron Roden, biologist, recreation specialist with the HCP Department, and I'm filling in for Bob Sandberg, so. He just wanted me to give a few quick updates. As you guys probably saw in the paper or have seen on our building itself, we have a mural that was recently painted, and they just finished this past week, so it looks great. Go out there, check out our mural. And in association with the mural, we are also going to put up a sign that just kind of identifies us as the building, so pretty simple, just our logo, and then reckless desert reserve right there. So we'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks.
Make it easy for everybody to find that wants to...
Exactly, so that they can see it on both sides, whatever street they're on, they'll be able to come into. be able to come into the reserve.
You know, and we'd really encourage people to stop by and look, they've got some great exhibits in there, and why don't you tell us just a little bit about what you got in there?
The most popular are certainly the live exhibits. We've got desert tortoises, we've got a gila monster, we've got a kingsnake, a tarantula and a scorpion, so a lot of the desert animals, and then we've just got other exhibits and information concerning the different animals and the ecosystem and the reserve in general. It's a great place to bring kids, Cub Scouts, things like that.
My kids went and did it this summer for the first time, and spent an hour and a half in there, and really, really enjoyed it.
Yeah, they've got some great, great exhibits.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's kind of like a secret, a little hidden gem, and most people don't know about it, and we're hoping that the mural will kind of highlight that we're there and invite more people to come check us out. Also, another way to kind of check us out is, we will also be at the fair, we'll have a booth there, so we'll have people on staff there full-time at that booth to educate the public about the reserve, about the tourists, and about the issues that we're seeing right here, so. The last item that Bob wanted me to update you on was the land exchange proposal that is currently going on with Long Valley. The BLM is currently meeting with SHPO, or the State Historic Preservation Office, to kind of figure out what kind of mitigation might be necessary to make that land exchange go forward, and that's, that's all I've got for you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
No, we appreciate, I appreciate you guys.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other business, we will stand adjourned.